We'd also like to Okay. We'd also like to thank all of the candidates for their willingness to participate and of course, flexing on a dime tonight in the midst of snowstorm and joining us on Zoom. We are all working together to produce this forum so that our voters can become better acquainted with you, the candidates, and the issues in their community, and they can hear directly from you. The questions that the candidates will be hearing tonight are questions that we received from the public through various media outlets, and they have not been made available to any of the candidates before this evening. We hope that the candidates will find these questions to be both challenging, enabling you to make an informed decision about each of these candidates. Finally, I'd like to introduce our moderator for this evening's forum, Eileen Burke Trent, who is president of the El Dorado County League of Women Voters. Eileen is not only a dear friend of mine, but she's also a long-term member of the league and a recipient of the prestigious award, the League of Women Voters Ruth Scher National Leadership Fellow. So we are in good company. She brings to her position as president a strong and varied 50-year background in the corporate and financial business world, also as a family farmer on both the east and west coasts, a nonprofit organizer, and a long-term community activist. Her dedication to the league and its current and both current and historical contributions to the welfare of the voting public is profound. So it is my great pleasure to say please welcome Ms. Burke Trent as our evening's moderator. So Eileen, would you like to take it away? And I didn't go over those rules about the questions, so I thought maybe I could have you go ahead and do that.
Yeah, I will. Welcome, welcome, everybody. Thank you all for coming. My gosh, what a wonderful turnout we have. I'm not sure we would have had nearly as good a turnout if we'd had it at the rec center. But I have piles of food that I got for everybody, so I have to freeze it. Tonight's candidate forum rules call for adherence to the terms of civil discourse by both candidates and the public. The hallmark of democracy is the willingness by both candidates, the public, and all members of our community to treat each other with courtesy and respect, not just the people we agree with. It is in this spirit that we are here this evening to engage in a vital part of our democratic process, a civilized discussion of the important issues that confront our communities. Again, I want to thank all the candidates in the audience tonight. Takes a great deal of energy to run for public office. I particularly am grateful to the folks who helped us adjust quickly to the Zoom format with help getting out the word and addressing fairly difficult technical challenges at the last minute, which we're still working on. Special thanks to Jill Heath, our graphics advisor, for the use of her, our abuse of, actually, of her Zoom account. Susan Chandler and her team of volunteers, our go-to contact in South Lake Tahoe, and to, of course, Elizabeth Leslie, our media and PR professional. We would not be here today without them. Our forum procedures are strict and fair and come from over 100 years of our fair practice and integrity, supporting and participating closely in the political process. We demand open and respectful treatment of our candidates and of our forum process, which is based on 100 years of work in this area. Each candidate will have two minutes to introduce themselves. Questions received in advance by email and from the attending, attending audience will be grouped according to topic and be fairly rotated between the candidates. Each will have two minutes to answer each question. We do our best to represent questions, all questions received. Many are of similar concern, so time constraints do not allow us to ask all the questions received. We try to cover the important issues presented, the ones that you seem to care most about, especially if several people focus on the same subject. So please don't be offended if we don't ask you specific questions. We have very limited time, and we warmly welcome you all and your, the candidates to this important forum, and we'll begin with candidate introductions. Kenny Kurtzweiler will be first in the candidate introductions. Kenny?
Yes.
Please, take your two minutes, sir.
Okay, I'll probably take less than two minutes. My name is Kenny Kurtzweiler. I've been a resident of South Lake Tahoe for 46 years. I have been married for 40 years, and I have owned my own business for more than 40 years as well. I am very active in the local community, and for anybody that wants to find out anything about me, I really strongly suggest they contact me by cell phone, 530-308-5265, or my home phone, 530-577-5678, or they can email me, skeebum96155, or skeebumfamily@charter.net. I encourage everyone to either that or come over to my house, 2189 Blitzen, and I will talk to you and answer all of your questions and concerns you have about our area.
Oh, Kenny, under one minute. I think you won the new
Yep, that's it.
The new prize.
Yep, that's it. Yeah, it's tough, it's tough to do this Zoom thing. Right now, I'm sitting in front of the rec center.
Well, you're doing
You know, to see if anybody, see if anybody, you know, decided to show up here or not. And
Okay, Jeffrey, you are next.
What the hell is going on? No show?
Yep, we were doing it by Zoom.
By Zoom?
Yeah.
Hey Kenny, we can hear your background noise with your conversation, just to give you a heads up.
Okay, we might want to, we might want to mute him now.
Okay, I'm going to
I muted him.
Okay, thank you. Jeffrey, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Hold on just a second, I have to start you over again. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Jeffrey.
Yes, thank you for hosting this. I appreciate it. All of the organizations, thank you for getting the candidates out tonight. I'm running for supervisor because I have seen some of the things that have been going on, especially with traffic and some of the issues that, you know, the resources that are being tapped and everything, we're just kind of getting overrun. I have put forward some solutions and tried to participate in bringing things to bear with the board of supervisors, and it's just a frustrating process. So I thought I would throw my hat in the ring and see what I could do to bring solutions to the county. We are dealing with myriad issues, but I think that I have the background and the fortitude to do that. I've been involved in the Sacramento region since 1985. I've been a volunteer in my community since 1989. And I've done just about every kind of hat you can think of, planning commission, boards, committees, environmental. So I'm bringing all of that to bear here as a supervisor. Thank you.
Why, we're, we're, we're making good time. Brooke Lane?
Good evening. My name is Brooke Lane. I accept challenges and I get jobs done. As a lifelong El Dorado County resident, I have many years' experience in both the public and private sector, and for some crazy reason, I want to serve as your El Dorado County Supervisor. My economics degree is from the University of California, Santa Cruz. I am a wife, mother, ser optimist, retired bank manager, former mayor, and city council member. I work well with partner agencies and have served on most, including the Education Foundation, Ambulance JPA, Clean Tahoe, Tahoe Conservancy, TRPA, Waste Management, LAFCO, and even the Barton Board, our hospital board. I understand District 5. Many of our issues are the same: healthcare, fire and public safety, insurance cancellations, infrastructure improvements, climate change, housing, traffic, vacation home rental enforcement, tourism, and snow removal. What is unique is that each of the 11 communities within District 5 may choose very different solutions. District 5 needs a supervisor who will listen and who will help attract additional support to move our district forward. Compromise is challenging. Regardless of the issue, my record shows I were conscientiously with all sides arriving at fair and meaningful solutions. Working together is of primary importance. I have the experience, strength, and desire to serve you as your El Dorado County Supervisor. I look forward to your questions and tonight's discussion. Thank you.
Oh, your undergirl, great. Okay, we're moving right along here. Okay. All right, Tamara Wallace.
Hello, everyone. I'm Tamara Wallace. Over the past several years, I and others have been very discouraged by the amount of services being cut by El Dorado County and the basin. Our district attorney's office, clerk recorder's office, mental health services have all been cut. There's now a move to shut down our almost new juvenile treatment facility in order to build a new multimillion-dollar facility on the West Slope. Dollar for dollar, we're not getting, we're not getting services that are being paid for by the El Dorado County Basin taxpayers. In addition, other portions of District 5 have felt almost completely ignored. I lived in Pollock Pines for a while and have stayed in the loop with the citizens there. They felt completely disenfranchised. Tohoma, Strawberry, and other communities feel the same way. As a resident of the city, I've always felt that the county thinks their jurisdiction ends where the city limits begin. The city is still within the county. That's why I'm running. I truly feel like I can and will represent District 5, all of District 5, better than has been represented for a very long time. I understand basin issues. I've lived on the West Slope portion of District 5 and know what it, what that's like as well. In addition, we've had representatives that have failed to develop good relationships with the other districts that will help our constituents when there are issues specific to the lake. The biggest example of this is the VHR issue. Our, the other board of supervisors are making decisions about something they haven't really lived. They're also happy to spend the money that this industry creates in their own districts while not feeling any of those impacts, both positive and negative. We need a supervisor that can effectively communicate our unique issues, gain buy-in for our needs, whilst also understanding, effectively making good choices for, while also understanding and effectively making good choices for the rest of the county. I think I can do that. I've done it on city council, and I want to do it for you now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's, boy, you guys are amazing. Okay, now we begin with the questions. So Kenny started, so remember, as I told you all, we rotate the questions so no one gets questioned first all the time. So Jeffrey, we're going to begin the first question with you. And you have all touched, a lot of you have touched in your opening statements on some of the issues that we have been presented. So let us take the first question. Local versus county-wide issues. As a supervisor, you will represent one district that will vote on critical county-wide issues. What do you believe are the key county-wide issues outside of South Lake Tahoe and Myers? And what is your position on those key issues, Jeffrey?
I see a lot of growth pressures as development has encroached up the hill. I know the county has had a voice in trying to remain a rural county to remain, keep our rural lifestyle, and yet the growth pressures still keep marching up the hill. A lot of development is pushing into Diamond Springs now, and we just don't have the resources for that. I think that the water supplies, I mean, we're seeing a lot of different pressures on natural resources as well as the traffic impacts. And as we keep developing more homes, they aren't developing jobs up here. And that is an issue because in order to reduce the commutes, you've got to have a jobs balance with the housing. But we're becoming a bedroom community to the Sacramento region, and we're suffering with the lack of funding and the impacts to our resources and the traffic issues without a proper tax base. And so I see that as a county-wide issue. There's enough voices out there to have said, we want to remain rural. They just, they had passed Measure E after numerous attempts of, like MN and O and all the others. I think that we really need to focus on what are those impacts? How do we get funding for mitigating those impacts and to hold the line on the development up into our hills?
Oh, great. Thank you, thank you very much. Okay. Brooke?
Thank you. Well, I, I personally believe hands down, and I think that the most recent Tahoe Prosperity report demonstrates that we are in critical need of housing. We know that that's true in the county. We know it's true in the state and even all across the United States and across the world. Right now, El Dorado County is 4,000 units short in providing affordable housing, low-income housing, senior housing. So I would like for the county to really put an emphasis on mandating. Right now, we currently incentivize that type of housing, but so far, it's so expensive for developers, that it's just not where the money is. So I think the county also needs to put some skin in the game. They need to provide some money, some support, some incentives for this different type of housing. I even would recommend a type of accelerator program where we make it easier for these type of projects to get through planning and also less expensive, which also helps make it affordable. So there are things that we can do as a county, and I believe that it is our number-one priority.
Thank you very much. Sorry about that, I'm having trouble with this stopwatch, so. Tamara? Do you want, do you want me to, anybody want me to repeat the question? I'm glad to do it.
No, I'm good, thank you. And I actually agree with Brooke, that housing is a humongous issue, both in the basin and on the West Slope. It will solve a lot of the issues with finding employees for our businesses, solving some of the homeless issues that the county is facing and, and causing those, those multitude of issues. I agree with a lot of what she just said. I think that we have to make sure, though, that in order to mitigate some of the impacts that Jeff was talking about earlier, that we put those housing developments in appropriate places that have proper infrastructure and that the county needs to make a good plan so that there's adequate water supply, adequate transportation infrastructure where we put those places. And then the other thing that is super, super important for our entire county is fire. Fire safety, and we have several closed fire stations just in District 5, but all over the county, the rural areas of the county, that we need to get reopened. And we had to reopen a fire station here in the city. We have to do those, those things to make sure that we are safe from another caldorn.
Thank you so much. Kenny? Kenny, he's muted. Excuse me, guys.
I asked him to unmute.
Okay, oh, there you go. Can you hear me?
Yes.
We got you.
Okay, I just unmuted. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
I can't understand you. Is that a yes or a no?
It's a yes. Did you hear the question, Kenny? Do you need the question repeated?
No, I do not.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, we're talking about other districts out of our area in District 5. And of, you know, normally, you know, my, my area of responsibility, everything is for District 5. But yes, I do understand that we are responsible for the entire county. Saying that, I have been following the large developments in the past few years and just recently that are happening down there where they're building 2,000 to 3,000 track homes in the, in an area that most of the people in that district, they just had a survey, and 90% of them came back, they said they do not want any more development in their area. That being said, we know we need development. We know we need a tax base, and we know we need to have responsible development. That being said, if we are forced to put development in an area where the residents do not want it, then I want to force the developers to put in the infrastructure, the water, the parks, the roads, the sidewalks, the lighting, all before they turn dirt. Too many times in the past, developers have come in and promised us the sun and the moon and everything else, and they said, we'll put all this stuff in after we build. Well, after they build, very little of it ever gets done. So if we are forced to put in the development in an area where the people do not want the development, then we will force the developers to put in all of the infrastructure before they turn a shovel of dirt. That's what I have to say.
Thank you. Guys, Jill, would you mute me? I'm coughing terribly. No, don't mute me yet, because I've got to read the question, sorry. Many residents in South Lake Tahoe and surrounding county believe that Tahoe is not what it once was, that instead of the playground for all, it has become the playground for the wealthy. They believe that there is a shrinking sense of community and that the concerns of full-time residents are given less regard than promotion of tourism. How would you respond to these concerns? And Jeffrey, that's your turn.
I did start the last one, so maybe
Oh.
That's just trying to be fair.
Thank you. Brooke, I guess it's your turn.
Thank you. And Kenny was not muted during the, the question, and the very end of it, he was, he was quite loud. So can you just read me the last sentence up to where you talked about a playground for the wealthy?
It's becoming the playground for the wealthy. They believe that there is a shrinking sense of community and that the concern of full-time residents are given less regard than promotion of tourism. How would you respond to these concerns?
Well, having been born and raised here, growing up as a young child, attending the public schools and spending my summers out in our summer cabin on South Upper Truckee, I certainly understand that people are feeling that way. And I would also say that, you know, there have been periods of time where I have felt that our once quaint, well-adjusted community, we sometimes get overrun by tourism. The exact thing that we worked so hard to build over the years because we went through a time where our economy made money about five months out of the year, and people were really struggling. And so we tried to increase tourism and, you know, be careful what you ask for. Right now, I think the residents are correct that they feel that their quality of life has been impinged on, and in some circumstances, our citizens have taken back control of that issue. I know as, as your elected official, I take those concerns very seriously, and I will work hard to strike a balance between our quality of life and also our visitors' experience. It takes quite a bit of money to come to Tahoe and visit here. We call it, those of us that live here, we call it poverty with a view. But we have access to the same recreation and the same opportunities as, as our, as our visitors, and I think that we need to strike a very even balance in that regard.
Thank you. Tamara Wallace, do you need me to repeat the question?
No, thank you. I actually agree with very much of what Brooke just said. We, we have this sort of double-edged sword. Many of us rely on those tourists to, in order for us to live here. And, and with my economic development background, I can tell you there's very few jobs, if any, that I can't draw a direct path to tourism. And my, I have kids who work for the school district. They wouldn't have their jobs if it weren't for tourists, and we are so blessed to live here. Every day, I thank God that I live here. And there are days when it's difficult. I hibernate for three or four days over New Year's, and we don't watch the fireworks in person. We livestream them because it's difficult to do so because of the crowds. But I get to live here in October, and I get to, and October is the best time of year in Tahoe, and it's usually much less crowded and much, and it's sort of our hidden secret that, you know, we get these amazing autumns in South Lake Tahoe. But, you know, we have to find the best, we're tourism farmers, that they are our manufacturing. And I don't know what the answer is because we haven't quite figured out yet what that diversification of our economy is, but the balance is where we need to find it, and we've worked really hard trying to. We just need to continue to do so.
Thank you very much. Kenny? Kenny?
I asked him to unmute.
Okay, yeah, it says I can't mute myself.
You're now unmuted.
Can you hear?
Yeah.
Okay, you can hear me? Okay, because it said that I, I couldn't unmute myself.
Okay, go ahead. Do you need me to repeat the question?
Yeah, why don't you fill it out again?
Okay. Many residents of South Lake Tahoe and surrounding county believe that Tahoe is not what it once was, that instead of the playground for all, it is becoming the playground for the wealthy. They believe there is a shrinking sense of community and that the concerns of full-time residents are given less regard than promotion of tourism. How would you respond to these concerns?
Okay, full-time residents. I used to write for a newspaper up here for about 20 years or so, and I did a survey one time, went back to check all the election results and everybody that voted and everything. And I had made a statement that I think there's only about 3,000 or 4,000 people that are still up here, that have been up here since the 70s. And I was kindly pointed out that they think there's only about 1,600 of us that have been up here. You know, so as far as the full-time residents go that have been up here for a long time, yeah, we are a dying breed. But as far as the over-tourism goes, we have brought that on ourselves. We have overbooked this place, we have over-tourished this place, and you can see in the major corporations such as Vail who came in, they don't even market anymore because they don't have to, because they sold 2.1 million passes, which means 300,000 to 400,000 people can come up here at any one time. We have a proliferation, we have an abundance of VHRs, and we're, we're telling people to come up here and take a walk on the Wild Side. We have overbuilt our neighborhoods. We are building 3,000 and 4,000 square foot homes in a 2,000 square foot neighborhood and telling everybody to come up here and pack it with 15 people per house. We did this to ourselves. Now, as far as the economy goes and tourism, there's not one person up here that can honestly say that we are not directly tied into the tourists. Now, I've had people that say, I'm completely retired. Yeah, but you depend on the people that work in the stores to service you that depend on tourism to coming up here. We need the tourists. We need to settle, oop, is that me? Is that two minutes?
Nope, you got it. You got another 15 seconds.
Okay, we need to dial back on the tourism up here, and we need to stop bagging on it because we are all tourists. We all, we need to treat everybody up here as a guest because we are guests of this place also. There you go.
Thank you very much. Okay, so Jeffrey, your turn now.
Okay. It is actually one of the main impetus for why I am running. I've heard from many of the residents who feel they've gotten the short change. They, we don't who feel they've gotten the short change. Um, they, we don't get the services that, uh, are needed. You know, our roads aren't getting plowed, our roads aren't getting, um, fixed. We've got potholes that jar our teeth loose. Um, we've got a lot of issues like that, you know, the trash and everything in the service is, is that, you know, we, we do get, uh, plenty of visitors up here and that is the base of our, main base of our economy. But the thing is, is that while the town is so crowded, the locals remain sequestered in their homes. When traffic gets, uh, so bad and impacts, uh, the neighborhoods in total gridlock, the, uh, local residents can't get to their jobs, can't do their daily lives. They can't go to the store. Uh, I've heard of people who have been on the road six to eight hours. I've experienced it myself, trying to get back just from church. And so that is what is going on. The residents do feel that they've taken it, um, the short end of the stick and that they're not represented anymore. And so that is one of the main reasons I'm running. The one key here item is, is that if you sequester our local residents, they're not participating in our economy. We can't get a, uh, restaurant reservation because it's so impacted. We can't go out and enjoy, uh, a beach, et cetera, because it's so impacted. And so if the local dollar, um, isn't being spent, what makes a tourism dollar more valuable than a local dollar?
Thank you. Um, Tamara, have I asked you to answer this question yet?
I have answered this question, but I would love to say something else.
I know, I know. We'll be, we'll be asking similar questions. Okay. Uh, let's see. Getting confused here. So I started with Brooke Lane on the last one, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so Tamara, you get to go first on this one. Um, will you support the right of the residents of Myers and the Tahoe portion of Eldorado County to have a vote and to make their own choice whether or not to join the city of South Lake Tahoe?
Say that one more time, please.
Okay, I will. Will you support the right of the residents of Myers and the Tahoe portion of Eldorado County to have a vote and to make their own choice whether or not to join the city of South Lake Tahoe?
I always support the voters' rights to do whatever they want. Is there a specific thing that they're joining the city on or or just joining the city?
I got the feeling that, are they part of the city right now?
They are not.
Okay. It could be that the city's trying to round them up into the city.
Well, I'm part of the city currently. I'm on the city council currently. Well, yes, if the voters in Myers want to join the city in any way, shape, or form, if they vote to do so, I support the voters' rights to do what they want. And I will support whatever the voters choose. I always have and I will defend that to my dying day.
You know, and I want to clarify this question a little bit. It looks like, it looks like from this question, this might, this might not be a great question to have asked, but it looks like that they're not sure whether they have the right to jo- to vote individually, to join or not to join. Does anybody, can anybody address this? Okay, let's skip this question, huh? Uh, let's, let's, go ahead.
This is Brooke. I mean, I, I can add a little bit of information to that. Um, and I think because you asked the question, we, you, you might want to just eighty-six it or you might just want to let us all answer as best we can. Because it does hit on a, on a, it's an awkwardly question, awkward question, but it makes a good point.
Okay, so, uh, so let me just, uh, uh, Tamara, you only took about thirty seconds or forty-five seconds. Do you want to address it further?
Yeah, yeah, I would because it could, it could mean one of, a couple of different things. And if it's talking about annexation to the city, of course they get a vote. And I would support whatever they choose. If it's talking about joining the city in their, what I'm going to assume they're talking about is, um, measure T, then absolutely, whatever the voters in Myers decide that they want to do, I would support that in whatever form that takes. And I have defended, um, I may not agree with whatever side that takes personally, because when I go into the ballot box, that's my decision. But I have proven that I will support whatever the vote outcomes. And so I will end with that.
Thank you, thank you. Um, all right, well, Kenny? I think you're next on this one. Would you like me to repeat the question?
I have to unmute him. Hold on.
Okay.
Where are you, Kenny?
I'll repeat the question while you're unmuting him. Kenny, this is, will you support the right of the residents of Myers and the Tahoe portion of Eldorado County to have a vote and to make their own choice whether or not to join the city of South Lake Tahoe?
I cannot.
He's, he's unmuted. Kenny, can you hear us?
Kenny, you're unmuted. Kenny, we can hear you.
Uh, let's go ahead and move on then. Um, we can come back to Kenny. Jeffrey, can you take this?
Certainly. Uh, I think that actually kind of is, uh, hinged to the last question where people are very unsatisfied with the services they've been provided. And so, yes, I would support it. It is, this is what pluralism is about. It's about the right of the voters to choose what they want to do. Um, the process, uh, is a little different than the question begs. I think the city needs to make an annexation request and then it has to go through LAFCO and a few processes. Um, and it would probably be an initiative process for the people to vote on. But I would definitely support that because I think that, um, the city has an opportunity. They've been able to provide services and, you know, maybe even just doing a cost share agreement with the county to provide the snow plowing and some of the local services that are needed here. So just to wrap that back up, yes, I would support whatever the residents are voicing their concern with. That, I am their representative as their supervisor and that's what I need to voice.
Okay, thank you very much. Is Kenny with us yet? Oh, he's still connecting to audio, I think. So, uh, Brooke, let's go with you.
Thank you. Yeah, this is a very important question. We've been talking about, uh, various opportunities, whether it's an annexation um, of the unincorporated part of the basin into the city, or whether we even look at possibly creating our own county. But all of it stems back to the fact that people are unhappy with the services. I have spoken to as many people uh, in the Myers area that, uh, would, would consider the idea of being annexed into the city. And I have also heard from very, very strong people saying that, that, that is not a solution that they're looking for. Um, however, uh, this would be an advisory vote and there's nothing wrong with an advisory vote. It does give us a good feeling for the entire community's desires. It would require the entire county to have to vote on allowing that portion of, uh, the unincorporated part of the county to be annexed into the city. So it's not simply just a, a decision that can be made between the Myers community and the city, rather the entire county. And that is where the difficulty has come in the past, because as you know, uh, we are a very small number in terms of the whole community. Uh, maybe we make up about thirty thousand population and there's two hundred and thirty thousand in the county. So we would have to have a very compelling argument uh, in order to get the West Slope to support that decision. It's not that it can't be done. And I certainly think that I could provide the leadership to help, uh, make that happen if that's what the community wants to do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, Kenny, are you with us yet? Okay. Hopefully he'll get his, we'll get his, uh, Kenny, are you with us yet?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. So...
Okay. I, I missed, I missed everything. Am I going to be able to talk on the, on the, on the Myers, uh, uh, the city taking over Myers?
Absolutely. Will you support the right of the residents of Myers and the Tahoe portion of Eldorado County to have a vote and to make their own choice whether or not to join the city of South Lake Tahoe?
Okay. I actually live in Myers, unlike other candidates. I can tell you for a fact, Myers will never, ever allow the city to take us over. We do not want to be part of the city. That being said, there is a strategic plan out for the city that, uh, ends in twenty twenty-six, I believe. And, uh, item number five point one actually has one sentence in there that says the city would look into the feasibility of, uh, taking over a portion of the county. Now, the portion that they're talking about is off of Black Bart. Now, we're, we've got boundary lines everywhere up here and I would agree to that, that Black Bart should be part of the city because it falls within the jurisdiction of the snow removal and everything else and it'd be a lot easier to be in the city. That being said, if the city, and there have been studies done already, but if the city took over Myers, they would not be able to provide the services that we have now based on the tax base. The services that are provided in Myers are paid for by the county. If they pulled out, the city would have to take over the snow removal, fire, police, and road maintenance. That would, and they get, the city gets their money from the tax base. We do not have the tax base. The city would go broke trying to provide us the services that are provided now by the county. The county would love to pull out of there. They'd love to pull their services out and say, "Okay, yeah, yeah, we're going to take all your money, but we're not going to give you any of the services." The city already knows and they, they, city, uh, people in charge, they know that it is unfeasible for the city to take over the county based on the tax base and, and, uh, the money coming in. There you go.
Thank you very much. Okay, let's see. Jeffrey, did you go first last time? I'm having trouble keeping track here.
I did.
Oh, you did, Tamara. Thank you so much. Okay, Kenny, you're going to be first on this one.
Okay.
It is, uh, it is fire safety. Um, many AI Tahoe community, does AI make sense to you guys? Well, let's just, the Tahoe community is a recognized firewise use district.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
Ninety of their fifteen hundred, uh, one thousand five hundred and twenty parcels are publicly owned by the Tahoe Conservancy, US Forest Service, CAL FIRE, et cetera. Many of these lots have little or no wildfire defensible space risk reduction, mitigating treatments for several years and are on a five or more year treatment cycle. Since the Tahoe residents applied and documented over a million dollars worth of risk reduction to their parcel, parcels over the past year alone, our residents' efforts seem futile. If the public lots are not treated in a timely manner and considered a priority when located within residential neighborhoods, is this a concern and how would you address this issue?
Okay. For forty years, I have been a tree service contractor in this community. I have done thousands and thousands of defensible spaces around this community. I can tell you right now, we have always fought an informal war with the Conservancy, CAL FIRE, and the Forestry Department on cleaning up their lots. They have always given us lip service on, yes, we're going to clean it up, but it has never, ever been done. We had a council member years and years ago that went every week, Bill Crawford, he went every week to the Conservancy. He had an empty lot across the street that needed to be cleaned up. It never got done. You're talking twenty-five, thirty years ago. It would, everything would never be done. We used to have a program up here called the Nevada Fire Safe where they would give you fifty percent of the money it costs to clean up your house, up to a thousand dollars. We did thousands of those programs. It worked. As soon as the money ran out, nobody wanted to get defensible space because nobody wants to pay for it. But we had the Nevada Fire Safe up here and it's a program that needs to come back. We, like I said, I have direct, direct knowledge on this because I have been in the tree business and the defensible space business for forty years up here. That's it.
Okay, thank you very much. Jeffrey?
I do see that the, uh, public lands that are being, uh, held are not being maintained. Uh, we have a lot behind us and there's, uh, actually one next to my wife's, uh, parents' house in, uh, near Bijou. I had to actually go in and trim up the branches and then I had the police called on me while I was doing it. So, the, uh, they came out, I said I had an order from the fire marshal. I cut the branches up to ten feet and the police officer looked at it and said, "Good job." Bottom line is, is it's not being done and it is a problem. So what I would do about that is to attend those boards and get them to commit to cleaning up the lots and to help preserve the area. You know, this, uh, they, they become a risk. And what we need to do, look at, basically look at, is what is their, uh, ability to pay out if they're in a position like PG&E for causing a fire? Uh, when we had the Caldoire Fire, some of those open lots were spot fires. So we have to work with our boards. We have to make sure that the risks are mitigated and we probably should do some things on our own.
Jeff?
Thank you, Jeffrey. Brooke, do you need me to re- uh, reread?
No, thank you. Um, another great question, uh, one that touches so close to home and is definitely a frustration for residents, private parcels where they are doing the work every year to keep their property firewise uh, and, and protected. And yet eighty-five percent of all the land in the basin is owned by either the Forest Service, the Conservancy, as you already pu- pu- pointed out, or local government. So there are large parcels that the Forest Service have, have cut and cleared and done a good job. The Conservancy, same thing. Some of their properties, they've done a really fine job, um, keeping up to date. I think five years is the problem. It's too long. Uh, so they're coming in every five years and doing the work, um, but it's still putting our residents at jeopardy who are adjacent to these parcels. So I would work with the Conservancy, the Forest Service, even TRPA, the local jurisdictions to come to an agreement that their properties need to be cleared at least every two years, if not every year, as we do as residents. So that'll be a, a huge lift for the Forest Service. You know, they own seventy-five percent of the land in the area, but, and I know they understand how important this is, but they definitely need to scale up their effort and, uh, work harder and more efficient.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, Tamara?
Thank you.
Would you like me to reread the question?
No, thank you.
Okay.
Um, so this is a really important issue because the person who is elected is a, is a board member on the California Tahoe Conservancy. Um, on city council, a, we also have a seat. Brooke was in that seat prior to my being in that seat. I actually currently serve on the California Tahoe Conservancy Board. Um, one thing that I can, I can tell you is it is currently five years that we go out to each of the lots. And the good news is, is that there is a lot more money coming through the state pipeline. The California Tahoe Conservancy is a state agency. It gets all of its dollars from the state. And so there's a lot more money coming through the state pipeline for wildfire and, uh, defensible space. And so there's a lot more money coming through the state pipeline for wildfire and defensible space. So I think that, and we're talking right now about getting that money on the ground, doing this stuff, because what some people may or may not know is that the reason that the firefighters were able to redirect the fire once it got into Christmas Valley is because of a controlled burn that was, took place on Conservancy land down there. So the other thing that we're doing in the city is we have, just we're in the process of starting a Fire Prevention Bureau, which will help induce and start more of those firewise communities that, that the Al Tahoe neighborhood recently had. And, and they are doing such a great job. And if everybody, all of our neighborhoods were firewise neighborhoods, I think they've, I believe they've got several on the West Slope. So that is, and getting those closed fire stations reopened, that is a big deal. Pollock Pines, I talked to some people in Pollock Pines on Tuesday night. There are several firewise neighborhoods down there. So they're already doing the work. We just have to get it done everywhere else.
Thank you so much. Jeffrey, this next question, everyone answered that question, right?
Right.
Okay. Jeffrey, this next question is for you. Currently, the board of supervisors chooses to spend most of the TOT collected from within the Tahoe Basin outside the Tahoe Basin. That is not right, as Tahoe Basin suffers the tourism impacts, yet the board of service, the board of supervisors did not, does not invest sufficient TOT proceeds into the Tahoe Basin infrastructure. Do you think the expenditure of TOT money is fair? If not, how can it be corrected? If it is fair, why is it fair?
I think the, we've got some background noises there, sorry. I think that the taxes have what we call a nexus in legal terms. They need to go directly to mitigate the impacts that are being felt, and that's the reason for the tax. If they're being spent elsewhere, I know a lot of the TOT in past years was spent on advertising, marketing for Tahoe. But I think that we really need to use it towards the impacts. Now, for instance, it's spent outside the basin, but there are impacts outside the basin as well. The traffic comes through the entire county coming up here. So the traffic issues are not just Tahoe Basin issues. They're the entire El Dorado County issue. We see also, you know, some of the impacts for the trash pickup and other things. The environment is really taking a beating. The very purpose of coming up here is to go and enjoy the beauty and the, the environment. Yet we're destroying it by overpopulating it. I've always likened Tahoe to be like a cereal bowl. You can keep pouring in the milk, and you're gonna make a big mess, and they don't know when to stop pouring the milk. So I think that we need to look at our tax impacts and what it is mitigating.
Thank you very much. Brooke?
Thank you. Another great question and a difficult one. The budget is, is difficult to break down with regards to the county. I reached out and spoke with Joe Harn recently, and I did some homework on the budget myself. And if we use this year as an example, twenty-two, twenty-three, they are projecting eight point two million dollars to be brought in with regards to TOT. And of that amount, the Tahoe Basin is about seventy-three percent of that. In addition, they have a fund balance in the TOT account that has carried over from past years that has five point nine million dollars in it. So if you add that to what they're projecting they're going to get, that comes to a total of fourteen million dollars. The county this year is awarding eight point two million dollars to the basin. That's in between Lake Valley Fire and various other groups up here in the basin. That also includes transportation, microtransit. It includes, I forget the name of the Tahoe Paradise Park, it includes some money for them. So we're gonna be getting actually more than seventy-three percent of the allocation. I think that the county has heard District Five's concern that we provide a lot of the income and we don't get a lot of it back, and I think in years past, that was a true statement. But they are trying to correct that today, and this year's allocations to the city is proof that they're moving in the right direction. More pressure to come.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Mara, do you want me to repeat the question?
No, I'm fine. Thank you. It's true, everything that Brooke just said. However, that's a one-year plan. We need to make sure that that, it's approximately just under eighty percent of the TOT that is generated for the county is generated in District Five. And that includes everything, Pollock Pines, the basin portion here, Myers, and Tohoma. So to me, that needs to go invested right back into Pollock Pines, Myers, Tohoma in the form of enforcement for the VHR issues, road maintenance and repair, Lake Valley Fire, and so on and so forth. In the past, it has gone to the chambers of commerce and things like that, and I'm a chamber girl. I, I'm, I'm pro Chamber of Commerce, but they should not be getting funding from TOT. It's just, it's nonsense. So that money needs to go absolutely a hundred percent back into mitigating the problems that are caused by TOT, the transients. And so we need to fight ongoing, year after year, not just for one year. And I'm so grateful that the county is making that decision for this year, but we need to make that happen every single year in perpetuity.
Thank you very much. Kenny? Would you like me to repeat the question?
Okay, unmute. I unmute myself. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. We, we do not see, except for this year, we have not seen any money come out of the county that comes from the VHRs and the TOT that comes up here to us and Pollock Pines. Now, speaking of Pollock Pines, hey, I'd like to say hi to everybody down here in Pollock Pines, and no, we have not forgotten about you. You are part of us. We will include you in everything, and I will be down there for you guys, including talking about the VHRs, the homeless situation, and the traffic. That being said, we need all of that money from the TOT, from the VHRs, and the county needs to stay in Pollock Pines and Myers. That being said, how are we gonna do that? I don't know. We have to be able to count to three. So if I become a board supervisor and I ask the other four supervisors, hey, I want you guys to send one hundred percent of the money that you're getting now back up to us, it's gonna be a tough road to try to count to three to have them send the money back up here. If I was down there, I wouldn't wanna give the money back because this is free money that could help us. All of our TOT goes into the general fund. The only way, there's only two ways to get rid of that. The, the money has to go into a dedicated account that stays in the affected areas that are brought on by the TOT from the VHRs, that meaning Pollock Pines and Myers. Other than that, the only way to do it is to break away from the county and form our own county, and then we get to keep all the money. We won't have to go down to Placerville and ask for the money that is rightfully ours in the first place, all the time. That includes you guys too, Pollock Pines. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you, Kenny. Brooke, claim this, this, you kick off this round.
Okay.
What is your position in general on county government imposing more taxes, fees, and charges on residents and businesses in District Five? If negative, how would you fund needed services?
I think we have to begin to do business smarter. I believe that residents currently pay their fair share and cannot handle additional taxes, especially not today. So I would recommend that we go through and thoroughly evaluate the services that we give and how can we do them better and/or differently. It was mentioned before about possibly outsourcing snow removal to an entity that perhaps can do a better job than the county is currently doing. That's a good option. And there's, for example, the planning department. We need to look and make sure that we're doing everything as efficiently as possible and not holding people up in red tape unnecessarily that costs the county money and isn't really providing a very good service. So I would like to see us really vet what we do and how we do it and find a way to do things either better and/or cheaper.
Thank you. Tamara?
Could you repeat that question for me, please? I, I missed the first part.
What is your position in general on county government imposing more taxes, fees, and charges on residents and businesses in District Five? If negative, how would you fund needed improvements?
Well, I'm, I'm anti-tax across the board. Always have been. It, it has to be a very good reason in order to increase taxes. So we'll just start there. With regards to funding needed services, I think that we have to just work smarter. We have to reprioritize, do the basics, do them well. And until we can do the basics and do them well, we ought not be doing anything else. There are certain things that you have to do that are harder to do, and most of those are for the reason that your county was created and that local government was created for. Police, fire, roads. The county has a few other things that they are made to do through the state. Mental health services, health and human services, those types of things, planning and building. Do the basics, do them well. There is no way that you can convince me that we are, that the county is running lean and mean. A very good example of that is a decision that was made on Tuesday for an employee who quit and was given a multi, a huge severance package for an employee who quit. Those are not cost-effective ways to run a county. You just have to run better and run smarter. This, this is just an ineffective way to do business.
Thank you. Thank you. Kenny, are you there? Kenny, can you unmute?
Oh, there we go. Did I unmute?
Yes, you did.
Okay, you guys have to send that to me because I can't, I don't have any way to do it otherwise.
What is your, do you remember the question? Can I, should I?
Yeah, would you repeat that for me, please?
What is your position in general on county government imposing more taxes, fees, and charges on residents and businesses in District Five? If it's negative, how would you fund needed improvement?
Okay, for one thing, you cannot, we, we had a tax initiative come up two years ago, and it was for the fire department and equipment for the road control, or road maintenance and storm removal equipment. Both of those would only affect District Five rural area. It was a, it was a closed vote for just our area, and it had to pass by two-thirds. It failed. The reason it failed is because nobody wants new taxes because, just like somebody else said, it's inefficient government. Up here in District Five, we have the facilities and we have the infrastructure for everything required to run our county in an efficient manner. In other words, we have the buildings, we have the courthouses, we have the Sheriff's Department, we have all the mental health buildings. What we don't have is personnel, and we can't get any personnel up here because the county says they're broke, so they pull everybody down to Placerville. So every time we wanna do something, we have to go down to Placerville and ask them to build a house or do anything. Now, as far as the money goes, mental health, I'll use that as an example. Mental health in the grand jury report that just came out, mental health has more than enough money to run their area. They are actually giving money back because they can't spend it. The reason they can't spend is because they can't get the employees to stay because they won't pay a high enough wage to keep qualified people up here in South Lake Tahoe. That is the main problem. We do not have the personnel. We can't get any money up here, and it's just inefficient government, and just like Tammy said, they're spending money that, that they don't need to spend. That's it.
Thank you. Jeffrey?
Yes, ma'am.
Your turn.
Okay, I think that county government is run a bit inefficiently. I think we need to look at our programs. We need to look at what we need to do versus what we want to do, and then prioritize that. We have a responsibility for infrastructure. We have a responsibility for public safety. Those are two of the top priorities. And I think that we underfund many of those, you know, our roads are in deplorable condition. The fire departments have been suffering. They're overworked and underfunded. And so those would be my priorities, and look at what are our necessary services for the residents that are here across, or not just the district but across the county. But the key here is, is that we have to take a hard look at what is it we are not going to do. Now, as far as taxes go, I believe in paying our way. I think that I, I don't mind paying taxes if I'm receiving the services that I'm paying for. We have to provide a livable wage to county employees, the fire department, the police department, et cetera. They need to live here too. And so I do not have a problem with raising the funds that are needed to support the essential services, but we need to look at where are we cutting the non-essential services. And I think that's going to take a lot of work going through our budget.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much. That was a good question, I think, a very good question. They all are though, aren't they? Coming, this coming from the, the people. Now, we're into housing a little bit, and this is gonna be, I know, a very cogent topic for all of us. In light of the lack of enforceable work housing, cluster of VHRs, that would be vacation home rentals, driving local residents out, violation of neighborhood CCRs, and overwhelming traffic in neighborhoods, would you support a reduction in the number of VHRs operating in residential neighborhoods? Now, there's a second part to this question. I combined two questions that we got in. And are you for or against the VHR cap of nine hundred and the five hundred foot radius? Do I need to repeat that? Tamara, you're first.
I'm, I'm fine with the question.
Okay.
VHRs in general, I'm not, I'm not against VHRs. I think that we, as with everything in life, moderation is the key. A balance should be found with everything. We can find a balance between quality of life for our residents and our economy because we do not have residents if we do not have an economy to sustain them. Absolutely believe that to my core. I think that we, we with Measure T in the city are going to see far-reaching impacts. Loss of jobs, loss of high-paying wages, so on, so forth. In addition, Measure T has exacerbated a problem in the county. It pushed VHRs in the droves out to the county and has caused issues out there. A lack of enforcement because there's lack of dollars to enforce out in the county has caused problems. Am I in favor of the nine hundred cap and the five hundred foot radius? I have no problem with it because it's what is in the law. It's what the agreement came through, absolutely. And I begged, I begged for there to be a measured approach. And I begged, I begged for there to be a measured approach before Measure T got put on the ballot here in the city. And it would have balanced, again, that word, balance, between what was happening in the city and what is now happening in the county. Again, moderation is the key, balance is the key. We are a tourism town and for those of us who wish to come to our community and close and lock the door behind them, I find that incredibly interesting. Because we all came here, except for those of us who are lucky enough like Brooke, who were born and raised here. Uh, most of us came here as tourists and love it so, loved it so much that we moved here. I came here as a kid as a tourist. I moved here in my twenties. And I feel so incredibly blessed every single day that I live here. And yes, one or two days a year, I'm inconvenienced, but I get to live here three hundred and sixty-five days a year. It, we have to put it all into perspective. So absolutely, I'm in favor of the nine hundred cap and the, the buffer because that's what people wanted. That's what they asked for and it will alleviate some of the issues out in the county.
Thank you very much. Um, Kenny, you're next.
Okay, am I unmuted?
You are.
Am I unmuted? Okay, can you see me right now?
Yes, we can.
You can see me, right? Okay, this is to Riley. Riley, here I am. And the reason I have to unmute every time is because the people running this mute me because I tend to talk to people that have actually shown up here to the rec center and I'm here with them right now doing the Zoom. So they have to unmute me or they have to mute me. So Riley, that's your answer. There's my face and that's the reason that I don't do it. Okay, now to V H Rs. Okay, once again, I live out here in Myers. I can guarantee you, there is not one person who lives out here that is happy with the nine hundred, one, any number in between of V H Rs in our neighborhoods. That is a, I don't know who wanted it, but whoever wanted it was the board of supervisors and we got it. We are stuck with it. Now, that being said, we, like, once again, we have done this to ourselves. We do need to have moderation. We've always been a vacation rental place and we've always had vacation rentals. Now, about twelve years ago, there was a, a chamber up here and an affiliation called Tahoe South. They wanted to have everybody come up to the wild side. So now they go ahead and they put fifteen people in a three-bedroom house and it is a war zone in every single neighborhood, every single day. No, we do not, if the V, if the V H Rs and the vacation rentals do not get rid of the six to eight percent that are causing one hundred percent of the problems, and this includes Pollock Pines as well. Every single V H R will be gone if any one of us get into the board of supervisors. Everybody that lives in Myers do not want them. They do not actually have anything to do with Myers. All the T O T money from tax goes down to the county and the general fund. All the food they bring and eat in the, in the uh, in their uh houses, they bring up with them or they go and eat in the casinos. They bring nothing to the actual area of Myers unless we can get all of their money here. So there you go, that's it. And also, I'm going to be down at Pollock Pines on the twelfth. So all the people that can't see me, you can actually meet me and I've got a lot more information that I would love to pass out. It'll be at the community center and food is being provided. Thank you.
Jeffrey?
I, uh, I think V H Rs is a curious uh product. Um, I looked at this from my perspective. I have a degree in real estate and a good, uh, my master's is in public administration. I've been in planning for over uh thirty years. So when you look at it from the, those various perspectives, um, the hotel industry kind of took over as a resort and kind of shut down the old cabins that people used to go to and families when they went on vacation. And so now the V H Rs have come in and kind of replaced those old cabins, though they were called motor ends. I think that they need to be in their own zoning area. I do not believe that V H Rs, vacation rentals, need to be in residential neighborhoods. It is a business enterprise and most business enterprises are not allowed in residential neighborhoods. Um, we wind up with the residents having to manage them. It is all about mismanagement. And the impacts are felt by the neighbors. Uh, you have a different neighbor every few days. They're up having their fun times, which is great, that's their vacation, but the person that has to live next door has to get up and go to work in the morning. And so there's a lot of different impacts there, but the key here it is, is that the houses are built for domiciles, for people to live in. And there are a lot of people who have second homes, but when you go into a business enterprise, that's a whole different animal. And so business enterprises do not belong in residential neighborhoods. They belong in their own zoning.
Thank you very much. Um, Brooke?
Thank you. Another uh very good question. So with regards to the ordinance, um, I think we need to see through attrition what the nine hundred cap and the five hundred uh radius. Uh, you know, how that, how that goes into effect. There are other parts of the, of the uh ordinance that I'm very concerned about. Uh, there's very vague language in the ordinance. Um, for example, it says that if a vacation home rental receives three complaints within, I think it's twelve-month period of time, might be eighteen months, uh, that their permit may be revoked. I happen to know of a resident that lives in an incorporated part of the county. Uh, across the street from her was a vacation home rental that had eighty-five violations in three years. And just had their permit revoked. So I think the enforcement of vacation home rentals is hugely important. In the Myers area, there's no other form of lodging. Unlike uh in South Lake Tahoe with Measure T, uh eliminated vacation home rentals uh in residential areas other than the tourist core area. We didn't see a drop in T O T. As a matter of fact, we saw an increase, but some of that has to do with COVID nineteen. Um, the other part of your question was because of our housing shortfalls, um, is there an opportunity here if we were to eliminate vacation home rentals? Would that uh, would that decrease some pressure on um the residential neighborhoods? Um, I think it had a little bit of effect in Tahoe, uh, in the city, a very minor effect. Maybe a couple hundred homes went on the rental market, but by and large, the home prices are so out of reach that getting rid of V H Rs doesn't necessarily equate to more housing. But um I want to really see the ordinance strictly enforced. Uh, period.
Thank you. Um, yes, I think we're finished with that question. Thank you all very much. Um, these, these next questions kind of are all semi-related. It is widely recognized that there is a severe shortage of work, workforce housing in South Lake Tahoe and the surrounding county. What recommendations would you make to solve this problem? And Kenny, you're first, so we need to unmute you.
Okay, I'm unmuted.
Okay.
And I just have a question. Uh, I know we were supposed to end at seven thirty and I know we've got a lot of questions and everything. But uh, do you have any more questions after this one?
Were we supposed to end at seven thirty? I thought it was a.
It's eight o'clock, Eileen.
Yeah.
Okay, alright, well, anyway, uh, as far as workforce housing goes, uh, I think workforce housing should be located where the major workforces are, which uh, there are no really major workforce areas in the county. So we would have to work with the city in uh creating workforce housing near a transportation or bus line so they, people can get there. And uh, we need to work with the existing businesses, the major businesses that are already in Tahoe. They need to step up to the plate and help out and they have a public and private affordable housing project. Now, they do this, Vale does this in Vale and they also do it in Breckenridge. They devote quite a bit of money into the millions into affordable housing and transportation. South Lake Tahoe is the only place where Vale does not step up and help the community that they are in. They need to step up to the plate and work with us and not against us. That also goes, goes for uh Bark Memorial Hospital. Those two are the biggest people that bring in temporary housing. Or excuse me, temporary workers. Heavenly does it every year and also we need to work with the Nevada side in the casinos. Also, they need to step up the plate. But it needs to be a public and private. Okay, somebody just said there's uh public housing for Heavenly on, on uh Keller, I believe. And yes, I do know that, but they need to step up more. It needs to be working together. And so that's uh my only solution and it would have to be working with the city because there is no uh available workforce housing out in the county. Including Pollock Pines. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Jeffrey?
I, I, a lot of people call it workforce housing, affordable housing. I think what we need is just diverse housing. Uh, we have built for high-end, high-priced uh homes and that's it. We need a diverse uh selection of homes. And the key here is that not so much the, um, that the housing is so expensive. It's that the wages are so low. We are a service economy or as a tourist economy. All of the workers are just making minimum wages and they can't afford to live here. I mean, if they were to go off the hill on either side, the rents and the prices are actually just as high. But there's diverse working uh opportunities. There's many different types of jobs. It's not just low-end wages. So we need to diversify our economy as well as look at diversifying our housing stock so that we have a robust economy and housing for the workers that live here. One of the key items that I see is that we're pushing everyone off the hill, which adds to the traffic problems and is degrading the environment. We're increasing the G H Gs, the impacts to our uh transportation system, the emissions, the stuff that runs off and into the lake. This is just counterproductive and counterintuitive. We have to do better.
Thank you very much. Um, Brooke?
Thank you. Um, when you look around the entire basin, I think the city of South Lake Tahoe is the leader in this regard and that doesn't mean that we've done enough, but we've done a lot. Um, most notably, uh, the city has partnered with Saint Joseph's Land Trust. We provided two lots that the land trust is going to build ho, a home on and sell the home. So it'll may be more affordable, the, the land won't go with it, um, which makes it more affordable. It's a great uh homeownership concept. As all of you may know, uh, the city actually put money into the pot to help the Sugar Pine uh facility that's being built, two hundred and forty-eight units eventually. Although to the frustration of many and I understand, but uh they're starting out with just a portion of the project. Um, but because the city put money into that with the developer, we were able to attract like sixty-eight million dollars in state grants, all of this helping to make this uh facility affordable. Uh, we have built senior housing. Uh, we have built um housing for disabled, uh, people that need a little assistance but basically can live on their own. So we have built some really diverse housing here and we need to continue to do so. And the county, um, I would definitely bring to the county my experience in that regard and really push to have the county uh put some skin in the game and help make what is needed happen.
Brooke, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is it tomorrow or Tamara?
Either one is fine.
Okay. Tamara?
Um, so we, we here in the city, and long before I was ever on city council, I've been working on housing uh in the community. I am a renter. Um, I think I am the only one of the candidates that's actually a renter. I am living this every single day. I've not been able to move from my current house um because I can't afford to move. I'm lucky enough to have locked in a good rental rate um almost twelve years ago. So I live this. Uh, it's, it's a nightmare out here. Uh, we at the city have been working, we have, I believe, somewhere between four hundred and four hundred and fifty units breaking ground sometime in the, you know, anywhere between three and three months and two years in our community. And that runs the gamut from low-income affordable housing for rent to moderate-income housing for per, for homeownership. And it's single-family homes, townhouses, condo units, everything. And, and we just need to build housing, every single type of housing, market rate, all of that. Because not everybody wants to live in an apartment. Some people want single-family homes. And I have, I have my doc, my son's girlfriend who works as a waitress who makes nearly forty dollars an hour when all is said and done. And she, so that's pretty good money. She can't afford to live here. I have two kids who work for the school district um at the high end of that and they can barely afford to live here. Thank goodness, they bought six years ago and, you know, got in before this latest bubble. But it, it's, it's difficult to live here. We need that across the county. Because I know some people don't like it to be called workforce housing, but it's only caused that, called that because it means people who actually are still in the workforce need to be able to afford something.
You very much. These are, these are good questions, aren't they? Um, I'm, we've got quite a few more on senior housing, but I, I really want to get to, uh, I mean, on housing, but I think you've addressed it in a, in a wide way in your responses to the questions. Um, so the first person that's going to go on this one is Jeffrey. What are your plans and priorities around supporting the senior community in South Lake Tahoe? Do you think senior services and support need to be expanded? If so, how would you address the issues?
Well, the seniors are, I guess we got someone else talking there? Okay, um, I think the seniors are gems. They've done a lot of the work and set the foundation for what we are sitting on right now. And so senior services such as Meals on Wheels and other uh outreach needs to be funded in order to reach them because they do not uh have the ability necessarily to uh get around. Maybe they can't drive, maybe they have other infirmities. Uh, we have my wife's mom that lives with us. She's ninety-two and has uh infirm, infirmities, you know, she's disabled. So we know those needs and it's not easy, especially having someone in our uh house where we can even help her. But we've reached out to the county for assistance and it's been just nothing but echoes. Uh, we hear nothing back, crickets. So we do need to fund those. We need to reach out and see what those needs are and to make sure our seniors are taken care of. It's part of our community.
Thank you. Um, Brooke?
Yes, thank you. Um, okay. We have an interesting partnership up here in uh the city of South Lake Tahoe, which the question was directly with regards to the city of South Lake Tahoe. But I'm sure that, you know, our, our residents in Pollock Pines share that similar concerns. In Tahoe, the county owns the building that the senior services are provided in, but the city is supposed to maintain it. And it's always been difficult. The funding for seniors has also been difficult. The county has made various decisions along the way to minimize the senior space in that building and bring in um other operations like mental health was in there for a while. So it's been a very difficult um negotiation between the city and the county. However, once again, this is an area where I feel we're doing better. Uh, the county has been a much better partner to work with and I would want to continue that good relationship uh moving forward. Um, and provide additional funding for the seniors. I know that their programs are strapped. I've heard it directly from the seniors, and I would push to make sure that there is an increase in ser, in revenue to the seniors, uh, moving forward and sustained. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Tamara.
Thank you. So COVID has been really, so let me back up. There's, there's really two segments of the senior population, at, at least the way I've seen it and the way it's been explained to me. Um, there's what we all have sort of historically thought of as seniors, the ones who get the meals on wheels and the ones, um, that need, um, more services. However, there's the new active senior. And I think that we all need to sort of, um, look at them both together and separately because, uh, I think that we're going to be seeing more of that new active population of seniors moving forward. People are living longer and they're living more active lives. But going back to what I was originally going to say, COVID has been really difficult on the senior population, the isolation that they've experienced. The good news is, um, that we have, we've recently gone back to in-person meals, um, both here in the basin and on the West Slope. And I'm so excited for that because some of that isolation is going to go away for them. Um, I deal with a lot of them here at my other job. You know, we do a food pantry every Wednesday at the church. Um, I think that some of the issues that have had happened between the city and the county with the building here in the city at least, um, have been resolved because of the new lease agreement for the fifty-six acres. And the new senior, the county senior services will be happening when the new multi-generational facility is built. Um, and currently, um, we are trying to work out what's going to happen with the old senior building, what that is, um, completely resolved.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, Kenny, could you unmute him, please?
Okay, can you hear me now? You unmuted me.
Yes.
Okay, would you repeat that question?
Sure. Um, whoops, what did I do with it? Sorry, guys. It was a senior, the senior issues question, huh? Oh, that's, um, here it is. Um, what are your plans and priorities around supporting the senior community in South Lake Tahoe? Do you think senior services and support needs to be expanded? If so, how would you address the issue?
Okay, the seniors, uh, that includes, uh, that includes Pollock Pines as well. There is a majority of the population that lives in Pollock Pines is in the senior phase. There is starting to be a majority of the people that live up here in South Lake Tahoe in the seniors. I am a senior. I'm sixty-five years old. I am one of the people that I'm going to be helping. Now, that being said, I cannot go into, find out exactly what it is that they need. They need to come to me. Actually, I'll go to them, and I need to find out what it is that the seniors need in Pollock Pines, what the seniors need in South Lake Tahoe. And I want to throw another group in there also, and that's our military veterans. We have a abundance of military veterans that live up in this area, including Pollock Pines. I am also a military veteran. So if my heart is out to the seniors and the military veterans, and what I need to do is I need to go into the seniors and the senior center, both here and in Pollock Pines, and I need to ask them, what do you guys need? What they need is what they're going to tell me to go find the money. It is my job to get them the funds, to get them what they need. It is not my job to tell them what they need. So, that being said, I am very, very, I want to see the seniors taken care of, and I want to see the veterans taken care of. But they need to get to me, and we need to get together, and they tell me what they need, and then I'll move heaven and earth to get them the money that they need.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, this is our last question of the evening. Uh, we're running a little tiny bit over, but let's, uh, let's end on this question. Homelessness. The Eldorado DHHS recently submitted to the current Board of Supervisors a recommendation to declare a homeless emergency in Eldorado County. If you believe this emergency exists, especially up in Lake Tahoe, what steps would you recommend to save it? And that's going to be our last question of the evening, ladies and gentlemen. And so let's begin with Brooke.
Thank you. Um, I would have supported, and, and the Board of Supervisors did, uh, last week or this week, uh, pass the emergency ordinance, and I would have supported that. And the reason why is because the turnkey program will be running out of money, uh, in June. So they really need to move quickly. And they basically just identified that in, in supporting that ordinance. Um, with regards to the city of South Lake Tahoe and the work that we've done up here with the homeless, it's been remarkable. We identified a hundred and twenty-five homeless, uh, residents up here, uh, when, when they did the count. Uh, since the Tahoe Coalition for the Homeless have received grant funding to acquire three different dilapidated hotel, uh, projects, uh, we've been able to bring a hundred of those, uh, into shelter and into services. They actually call themselves a service hub. So we've been able to solve about eighty-five percent of the homeless problem up here with a service hub, uh, project, and it's working. So I would strongly encourage, uh, the county to look at what we've provided up here and how we're doing it and to take a similar approach. It's going to require somebody welcoming a service hub into their neighborhood. We in, in the city of South Lake Tahoe will have three. So, um, it requires, um, political will. And as always, it's going to require money. But it's certainly a problem we have here. It's a problem that you have down on the West Slope. And I think that there are solutions out there that the community can rally around, and I will be highly motivated to help, uh, with that, with the rally and to bring people from both sides of the issue together on what they can agree on.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, Tamara.
Could you repeat the last part of the question? I just didn't hear the last bit.
Um, I'll, I'll repeat the whole thing for everyone. It is widely recognized that there is a severe shortage of, whoops. Sorry, ladies and gentlemen. I am, here we go. The Eldorado DHHS recently submitted to the current Board of Supervisors a recommendation to declare a homeless emergency in Eldorado County. If you believe this emergency exists, especially up here in South Lake Tahoe, what steps would you recommend to solve it?
To solve this? That was the part that I didn't.
Absolutely.
Okay. Um, I was actually at that meeting. Um, and again, they did vote four to one to support that resolution or that, um, crisis designation. I would not have voted to support it. And, um, there are a multitude of reasons why, and I spoke on that item at the Board of Supervisors that day. Um, the reason why I would not support it are many. The first being that when those motel units were purchased by our local, um, homeless coalition, they displaced working families. Um, were the working poor in our community, which caused further issues in our community. Um, but that's just not it. I, I work in, I, I work for a church. I deal with homeless people every single day. And there are still homeless people that are not being served by, by the, the navigation center that we have here. There are issues. I just think that, uh, it, the county is planning on work using their own staff and their own designation down on the West Slope uh, for what this, this whole situation is. And that's one of the reasons why I actually, in my comments to the Board of Supervisors, suggested that a private nonprofit run what they're doing, that they could do it more efficiently and more effectively. Uh, that government is inefficient at best, and that if they were going to do something like this, they should seek out a private nonprofit to do it because of the multitude of reasons why, um, government does things poorly. So, um, I would not have supported it, and I would, I will not in the future. I think that, that, uh, charity begins with churches and with individuals and with people. And, um, I think that there are better plans out there, and this was not it.
Thank you. Uh, um, Kenny, please. Kenny, you there with us?
Okay, you unmuted me. Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, would you, okay. Since we are talking about homelessness and we're talking about District Five and not everything within the city limits of South Lake Tahoe and what would happen and what we could do for city limits, the Board of Supervisors, you have to remember, we have no control over what happens in the city. We don't have a vote in the city as an individual and as a Board of Supervisor. I don't have a vote because I'm not on the city council. That being said, I am not going to address the homelessness so much up here in Myers area because I live here, I'm on the road every day, I'm in every area. We do not have that much of a homeless problem in the Myers area. That being said, District Five goes all the way down to Pollock Pines and borders Camino. There is a huge problem down there with the homelessness. You've got homeless, uh, families, singles, vets, and everybody is up there. Now, I went down to the Board of Realtors for Eldorado County, and they asked me the question about the homelessness. And my answer to that was, why are you putting all the homelessness and putting a, uh, either call it workforce housing, low-income housing, or transitional housing for the homeless up in Pollock Pines? There are no bus system, there's no transportation, and there are absolutely no services up in the Pollock Pines area. I look at, and I'm not trying to be cruel or anything, but they're using Pollock Pines as a dumping ground. The homelessness and the housing for the homelessness should be down, further down in Eldorado Hills, down in the Plastical area, where there are services for these people to get help. There is no bus service to get the people from Pollock Pines down to the Plastical area where the services are located. Now, it, I, I, you may sound cruel, and people say, oh, you know, you're just, uh, you know, getting rid of the homeless or whatever. You have to put the homeless people and the housing where the services are. There are no services in Pollock Pines to help the homeless. That's it.
Thank you very much. Jeffrey.
Yes, hi.
Would you like me to repeat the question?
Yeah, that was, I would appreciate that.
Really wasn't just about Lake Tahoe, South Lake Tahoe. Would you like me to repeat it?
Yes, please.
Okay. The Eldorado DHHS recently submitted to the current Board of Supervisors a re, a recommendation to declare a homeless emergency in Eldorado County. If you believe this emergency exists, especially in Lake Tahoe, what steps would you recommend to solve it? So this is really a county-wide question.
Yes.
Uh, the person asking it wondered if you, what you would do to address it countywide and in Lake Tahoe, South Lake Tahoe.
Right. And I understand the focus on Tahoe, but really, you know, it is a county issue, and we have to work across the county. A Board of Supervisors is actually that aboard all five districts. And so homelessness is a vexing problem, not just in our county, but across the state, uh, especially in California. California seems to carry more than its burden. The key here is, is that you need to have supportive services in order to help those people lift themselves out of their situation. There are different kinds of priorities. There's a lot of different services. There's nonprofits, there's government programs, there's veteran programs. There's a lot of things. What we need to do is sit down as a collective and figure out what the resources are instead of being like an octopus and having all these arms trying to reach out to these people. But we need to actually understand what the need is, what the services are that can be provided, and what support is needed. Um, transportation is one of those big ones. You can't leave homeless people up in an area where there's no bus service or no other supportive services for them and, and, you know, essentially trying to get them to pick themselves up. That's one of the keys. We can't help people who aren't willing to help themselves. So we need to assess, what is the mental health capacity? What is, uh, the dependency capacities? And then provide those services. But we also have a limit. If you can't accept those services and get yourself out of your situation, then we can't just keep throwing money at the problem. We have to know and put very specific metrics in success.
Thank you very much. Um, that, that concludes the question part of our program tonight. One of the things I want to do is thank you all for attending and for supporting, uh, the people running for public office. As I said, they're obviously all very committed and have a wide range of knowledge and experience. And one of the other things I want to do is, um, apologize to those people who we missed tonight because we were stymied with a dump of snow. Uh, and a lot of us who work on these programs, um, you're not in South Lake Tahoe. We made arrangements to come to South Lake Tahoe to do this forum for you all. And we had sixty people tonight. I, I think it, I'm not sure we would have had that many. But I also want to thank Kenny for hanging out, uh, at the center, uh, to, to use their, um, internet, but also to be there to let people know that, uh, that we, we had it on Zoom. We did everything we could possible to reach as many people as we could on short notice. Now, it was only canceled this morning because of the snow. And my team worked religiously to get this going tonight. So again, thank you all for coming. And Elizabeth, um, do you have anything to say? Would you like to give them some of the, uh, ways to get ahold of us?
I would, but I, I would like to just take a step back, and we didn't give them their closing statement time.
Oh, that's right.
So let's give, I know we're running a little bit over, but we still have ninety-three participants here.
Oh, my goodness.
We've been topping out at a hundred, and as someone leaves, someone else has come on. So, um, let's go back and, and I, I've forgotten who you, who should be.
I, I do know. So Tamara, you would be the first one for the closes. Please forgive me, guys. I'm actually doing the work of four people tonight, so if I seem a little schizophrenic.
You're doing a great job.
I'm used to doing the work of two, at least, but four sometimes is beyond my ken. Um, so Tamara, you're first with your closing statement. Let's make it two minutes if we can. If we can't, we're going to give you three.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, uh, to the League of Women Voters for this opportunity tonight. I really appreciate it. I wish we'd have been in person, but I understand the circumstances. Um, this, this job is all about relationships. And I've spent the last almost year, uh, down building relationships on the West Slope. I lived in Pollock Pines for almost three years. Uh, I've been in Tahoe for about twenty-plus, uh, building relationships. I have five kids, four grandkids. Um, I've proven that I know how to count to three, which is super important in this job. It's all about relationships. I think relationships are the key in any aspect of our lives. Um, I think I can say with one hundred, I don't think, I know, I can say with a hundred percent certainty that no matter who you choose, whether it's me, Brooke, Jeff, Kenny, we all want what's best for this community, this district, and this county. We just have different ways of getting there. A hundred percent, we all want what's best. You just have to decide what path you want to take with, with whichever one of us you choose. We all love this area. We all are committed to this area in different ways. And I hope that I'm the one that you choose. I have a love for Eldorado County, a love for South Lake Tahoe. I have a love for Eldorado County, a love for South Lake Tahoe, a love for Pollock Pines, Tohoma, Strawberry, all of the areas. I've been spending time in Cameron Park. One of the things that happened during the Calder Fire is I was making these, you know, weekly trips to the West Slope. And I got this amazing opportunity to go all of these roundabout ways through Eldorado County. And I saw parts of the county that I'd never seen, and what a blessing that was. I just feel so incredibly blessed to live in this, this county. It's amazing. Um, we are, we are so lucky to live here. And I hope that I am the one that you choose to represent you on this board. This board is, um, difficult. This county is difficult to govern because of the way that it's, it's set up. But I think that I've proven in my time on city council that I will make the right choices for the right reasons, not because of who I, what I believe, but because of the citizens. So, vote for me.
Thank you very much. Uh, unmute Kenny, please. Kenny, are you still with us? Can we unmute Kenny?
I am. Okay. A lot of people, uh, who have just come up to, uh, the Tahoe or Pollock Pines area, yes, this is my third time running for county supervisor. And if anybody who has been around for the last eight years, you know, or even going back eight years to when I first ran, and you look up exactly what I used to talk about and what I put out in writing, almost not one word has changed since the day I ran for office eight years ago, the first time. The only numbers that I had to change was how long I've been married and how long I've lived up here and how long I've owned my business. I am still passionate about every issue that comes across for here in Pollock Pines, District Five, and Eldorado County. I am very active in the city also, even though we don't really have a say in the city. But one thing you can get with me is consistency and accountability. It's just like that movie, My Cousin Vinny. You don't pull the wool over a Gambini. That will never happen. I will fight for everybody. Everybody knows that I'm a fighter. Everybody knows that I will not give up. And everybody knows that I, I stand, I stand open for everybody. And everybody can come to my house, call me on the phone anytime. And I would encourage everyone to come down on the twelfth down to Pollock Pines to the Community Center, May twelfth, and meet me and ask me your questions. I will not, not answer any question that you have. And my policies and my thoughts have not changed in eight years. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Um, Jeffrey?
Uh, thank you for the opportunity to come and help me, uh, let me answer some of the questions. Um, I want to also reach out and let others know that, you know, with this, while this has been a big focus on Tahoe with a little bit of Pollock Pines, there's a lot of communities. There's Tohoma and every, uh, there's, you know, Strawberry, all the way down within the district. We all feel that we've been abandoned by the county because we are removed so far. And I am here to represent everyone. I did not ignore those areas. The questions just seemed to center around the larger population in Tahoe and Myers. But the key here is, is that you want to hire someone. This is an interview. And it's a job that requires a lot of knowledge in planning, managing budgets, transportation, a whole host of things. And I've acquired that knowledge and the skills that, uh, through my career. Um, you, you need a thoughtful leader that's going to be able to talk to these issues, negotiate with the partners, the other, uh, supervisors, because that's what it's about. It's about partnerships. We have to form partnerships with all the different people in leadership positions, with the county employees, and get the county on track. And make sure that our residents are represented the way they deserve, the way they have been paying their taxes for. They need to be a part of the decisions. Now, one of the things that I want to do in my term, if you elect me, is to have many more people have a voice. I would be appointing some of our residents to the boards where I can because it's all about pluralism. It's about all of us running our community as a collective. And I want to hear your voices. I want you to be talking and telling us what we should be doing. And I hope that you'll vote for me on June seventh. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Last but not least, Brooke.
Thank you. I also want to thank the League of Women Voters and the South Lake Tahoe Democratic Club, uh, for hosting tonight's event. Uh, the league and the Dem Club moved quickly as winter had more to say. I also want to congratulate the other three candidates for stepping forward and agreeing to run for the district supervisor position. That is very commendable. As you have all heard tonight, we all share the common viewpoint that we want to move our district forward in meaningful ways. Where we differ is how. I am different from the other three candidates in that I have been an elected official for over ten years. Throughout my entire tenure as an elected official, which spanned over two decades, I raised a family and worked full-time running the family's small business and later working in the banking industry. I know how to navigate the political waters to get results for you. I will create an advisory body with one representative from each of the eleven communities that make up District Five. We will meet quarterly or more often, if necessary, to discuss issues, problems, and possible solutions. I will hold regular office hours on both the east and the west slopes. Your emails and phone calls will always be promptly responded to. You know, there is a saying, when one is talking, they are telling you what they know. But when one is listening, one just might learn something. I plan to do a lot of listening. Thank you for taking time out of your evening to join us here tonight. And just remember that absentee ballots will be mailed out by the county beginning on May ninth. And I respectfully ask for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you all. Elizabeth, let's, uh, let's, uh, encourage everyone, men and women, to consider joining our county-wide organization. Uh, you can get to us, Elizabeth, if you will post our, um, webpage. It's pretty simple, www.lwveldorado.org. And you can join just by clicking join. Anything else you want to let them know, Elizabeth?
Just that this whole session has been recorded. And once it finishes downloading, uh, we will be adding it to our YouTube channel, which I put the link in the chat for that. We will then place it on our website as well as our Facebook page. So I know there were, you know, I, I, we received a few messages throughout this forum that folks could not join us because we were at a, an audience. So they can then watch it later and you're able to share it, uh, in that way. We also are looking for members. Please join us. There are obviously, as a lot of work coming up with our June election, and then even more so in November. So if you've ever considered joining the league, now is a wonderful time. You know, we are nonpartisan. And again, you can go to our website, l w v eldorado.org and find us there. And again, thank you so much to everyone who helped to organize this, to Jill for doing the tech, to Eileen for just being a wonderful host, and to all these candidates and the very interested voters that showed up to this forum. I am just bowled over by how fast this all happened and people still came together because they care so much. So, you know, as the league, we just want you to get out there and vote. If you have specific questions about voting, we're happy to answer those. Just email us if you would like us to help, uh, with your homeowners or elections or register voters. You can also contact us, um, via our website or Facebook.
We, we do monitor elections, not just the national and the state and the local. We monitor homeowner associations. We've monitored, uh, Native American, uh, uh, voting, for especially around casino issues, always interesting. And, um, we, we're, we're here to help and we're here to give you good, honest, researched information. And, uh, we encourage the candidates to go to Voters Edge. Uh, Elizabeth, you want to give them that information?
Sure. I, I did also put that in chat, but it's called votersedge.org. You put in your address and your entire ballot, top to bottom, comes up. Even some of the harder to find races like judges and school board and whatnot. So I'll be reaching out to these candidates to make sure that your candidate information in your profile is on Voters Edge so more people can see you. It's a free service and again, it's nonpartisan. And it also provides information at the state level on who is funding elections. We always recommend that people follow the money, uh, when, when you're trying to decide how to vote. So again, Voters Edge, and I'll be following up directly with the candidates to make sure we get all their information there. And we will also be putting a link to this forum, uh, on Voters Edge as well.
And we'll be doing forums all over the county. Uh, this, this, uh, primary election posed special issues, uh, for us. We're doing another forum in Placerville for judges and assessors. We will, uh, I think this is one of the first times that we're actually going to be able to vote for a judge i- in a few years. So, uh, and the assessors. And again, that's a county-wide, uh, we'll see, judge is District Six, right? Office Six, but assessor is county-wide. So, that'll be this coming Thursday on the twenty-eighth. It'll be livestreamed. If you can make it to Town Hall, do come. We'll also be doing, uh, forums, uh, throughout the state, or throughout the county for the November election. So, we need your help. If you are willing to help the league, we would be ever so grateful. So again, thank you all for coming. Elizabeth, any last words?
That's it, just a thank you.
Okay, guys, have a great evening. Again, thank you to all our candidates. Very grateful and all our attendees.
Thank you.
Good night.